Surprise that fired up. That thing's been in my truck all week. It's frozen.
Stan, and join me in the pledge. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Alderman Yulidol. Thank you, Marv. Did you have your hand up next? Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is committee reports. Alderman Chevalier.
Yeah, for the planning and zoning, there's several items that will be on the agenda this evening to discuss as far as the end of year permits, unless anything has changed. Fifty-eight residential permits with sixteen million valuation for the year, two new commercial permits with six plus million valuation, and fifteen tenant finishes remodel. We're on the agenda this year.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the city administrators' report, but before we get any information from Cynthia, we have a pending tonight. So Detective Knowles, you are up.
Thank you. Police Department's been rebuilding from personnel shortages. Thankfully, we're pretty healthy now. During that time, the detective division operated, which is one detective, because we were short and the needs were focused on controlling the street and answering calls. Now that we are restaffed, we're at the point of making some assignments and some promotions, and one of those is tonight, and that is to fill our second detective vacancy we have. Melissa Knowles has been with us for almost three years. The selection committee in reviewing everybody agreed that not only her experiences before her law enforcement life, but her tenacity, her attention to detail, and her drive to really just never take no and not quit made her the perfect selection for the job. So we're making it official tonight. She's receiving her detective's badge, and we're going to ask her mother and her daughter to present that.
Be careful. Thank you. Ms. Wagner, do you have anything to add to your report?
The only items I would add to the report is the fact that City Hall will be closed next Monday and the following Monday in observance of Christmas and New Year, and wish the governing body and the community a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number six. Alderman Atkins.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I move to approve bill number twenty-nine sixty-six dash twenty-two stormwater revisions for the second reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? I see Alderman Russell's also joined us on Zoom. Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Russell.
Aye.
Alderman Yulidol.
Aye.
Alderman Shipley.
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Six-zero.
Motion carries, Ms. Wagner. Please read the bill.
An ordinance repealing and replacing section five-two-oh dot one-one-oh dumping or depositing dirt, rock, or other materials, and enacting in its place a new ordinance, section five-two-oh dot one-one-oh dumping or depositing dirt, rock, or other materials, or illicit discharges.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number seven. Alderman Atkins.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve bill number twenty-nine sixty-seven dash twenty-two declaring the November eighth, two thousand twenty-two election results for the second reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll say that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Russell.
Aye.
Alderman Shipley.
Aye.
Alderman Yulidol.
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier.
Aye.
Six-zero.
Motion carries, Ms. Wagner. Please read the bill.
An ordinance declaring the results of the election held in the city of Smithville, Missouri on November eighth, two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda does have two readings. Number eight, Alderman Yulidol.
Motion to approve bill number twenty-nine sixty-eight dash twenty-two accepting gifted land emergency ordinance sponsored by Mayor Booley first.
First and second, or just first? First, first reading. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Atkins, seconds. Any discussion?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I have a question. I just got, just on this, on, for the reason for the emergency order, can you clarify that, please? I think I know the answer, but if you could just clarify the reason for the emergency order on this, please.
Yeah, this is part of the trail connecting Diamond Crest to adjacent subdivisions, and we've been working on it now for what, Jack? A dozen years? Landowners finally got everything taken care of. Our attorney's got everything taken care of, and it's end of the year, and we're wrapping up paperwork.
Great, thank you.
A tax issue for wrapping up that paperwork.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier.
Aye.
Alderman Yulidol.
Aye.
Alderman Russell.
Aye.
Alderman Shipley.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Six-zero.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Please read the bill.
An ordinance of the city of Smithville accepting gifted lands.
Thank you. Now, second reading, same bill?
Motion to approve bill number twenty-nine sixty-eight dash twenty-two accepting gifted land emergency ordinance sponsored by Mayor Booley. Second reading.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Alderman Atkins, second. Thank you. Any discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Yulidol.
Aye.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Shipley.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Russell.
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier.
Aye.
Six-zero.
Motion carries, Ms. Wagner. Please read the bill.
An ordinance of the city of Smithville accepting gifted lands.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number nine. Alderman Yulidol.
Motion to approve bill number twenty-nine sixty-nine dash twenty-two amending zoning code related defenses. First reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Alderman Chevalier.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier.
Aye.
Alderman Shipley. Alderman Yulidol.
Aye.
Alderman Russell.
Aye.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Six-zero.
Motion carries, Ms. Wagner. Please read the bill.
An ordinance amending sections of chapter four hundred, the zoning code related defenses.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number ten. Alderman Yulidol.
Motion to approve bill number twenty-nine seventy dash twenty-two rezoning one-eight-six-zero-one north one-sixty-nine highway from R dash one B to R dash three P. First reading.
Thank you. Alderman Chevalier.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Chevalier.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Russell.
Aye.
Alderman Yulidol.
Aye.
Alderman Shipley.
Aye.
Six-zero.
Motion carries, Ms. Wagner. Please read the bill.
An ordinance changing the zoning classifications or districts of certain lands located in the city of Smithville, Missouri.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number eleven. Alderman Yulidol.
Bill number, or motion to approve bill number twenty-nine seventy-one dash twenty-two rezoning northeast corner, corner of Second Creek and Loman Road from A one to R one B and R dash three. First reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Alderman Chevalier.
Second.
Thank you. Is that Alderman Russell also? Tie goes to the room, maybe? Sounded like it. He's off mute. Do you? Okay. Any, before discussion, public comment? Yeah, and Alderman Hartman's logged off as well. Don't want to call him when you call roll. First, on the public comment, and just a reminder for everyone, a public comment, you are limited to three minutes each. State your name, an address, and topic before speaking. First, public comment card is Douglas Wilson.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Doug Wilson, attorney, attorney in Liberty. My office address is twenty East Franklin Street, Liberty Moe. I'd sent over an email this afternoon to some of the administration over here just to give you a heads up, not trying to drop some bombastic, you know, set of allegations, cold turkey on everybody, like to be completely professional about this, but the bottom line is, I've been hired by Ms. Loman, who's been a, you know, a staple, an icon in the community. No, no bad word can be said about her. She was approached, oh, what, a year, year and a half ago by a real estate agent. She, she's had this land in her family forever, no intent to sell, approached by an agent, several, several attempts, hey, you should sell, you want to sell, let's sell, you can make a lot of money, et cetera. Over the course of a few months, the agent convinced her they, they had a buyer, they went down on the price, up on the price, down the price. The bottom line was, she wasn't going to sell without this absolute restriction, a covenant that requires the land to be single-family only. That's common. This is not a bad person. Sorry for all you that spoke at the P and Z that love duplexes, but it's okay. She, she has a right to restrict that, that zoning and that type of build out, and she did, and the agent agreed, and they, they signed a contract. You guys have seen it. It was presented at, at P and Z. Technically, it didn't fit in one of the categories of, of the, oh, findings of fact, and so by gosh, there's not a category for completely invalid contract or hasn't been followed. I mean, complete breach of the contract. I guess that's not a category of your checklist, so they went ahead and approved it at P and Z, and here we are. But the bottom line is, I mean, this, this problem's not going away. You know, it's just not. I'm, I'm sorry, but it's too big of a deal. It's not something that she should just eat. The explanation at P and Z was, hey, we really wanted to follow that contract when we signed it, but man, my buddy, my partner, he got, he, he, he went broke, and now we got a new, new guy that came along and wants to build out this thing to the max, small, smallest lots we can fit in there, the maximum size of these duplexes. And so, man, it's going to be great for the city. That's where our police officers and our teachers, our nurses are going to be able to live. I mean, come on, we're better than that, aren't we? This is, this is silly. So I'm asking everybody just to take a step back. This is December. No one's building anything, you know, next week. I'd ask you to consult your attorney and table this thing. But it, it is headed to court, and, you know, I, I've been part of city government, and, you know, I'm not wanting the city to be drug into this. It's going to take a while. It's time. Thank you. Thank you.
Next is Jennifer Justice. Name and address for the record.
Jennifer Justice, one-three-three-one-seven Mount Olivet Road, Smithville, Missouri. I speak in favor of this, and I did speak the other night at Planning and Zoning. I am a Realtor and with a little bit of experience, truly, if that was put in the contract, that should have been put in the deed restriction that was filed with the county, and my understanding is that was not done, first of all. So the legality of that would somewhat negate what was just said, but in terms of the comprehensive plan and what has been thought out for Smithville, I was part of that in two thousand nineteen, and there's a clear need for housing in this community. I spoke with several residents and several seniors that indicated something of a smaller footprint would actually serve them better in the future. Not only that, it could serve the needs of the children of people within this community currently. If you look at, you know, some of our median pricing being so high right now, this could potentially serve some of those folks that have children that would graduate from college and then want to come back into our community. Right now, that's a little bit difficult for them, and the only way that we're going to proceed forward to solve a problem like this is through more housing, which is so desperately needed. When the comprehensive plan was conducted, it was approximately forty-one percent of the people that participated that said they anticipate a need in their change of housing to something like this that would serve them, potentially, like I said, a smaller footprint, or maybe even maintenance provided. There's been lots of different things thrown out there that could be a possibility here, but I would speak in support of this. This does fall in line with what we need in Smithville. It does fall in line with the comprehensive plan, and to my knowledge, no information restricting that to single-family was put into that deed, and as Deb stated at the planning and zoning meeting, a duplex is considered a single-family dwelling. It is not a multifamily dwelling because it is not four or more units. So by textbook definition, that does fall within those guidelines. Thank you so much for your consideration and the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Clayton. You know, name, address, three minutes.
My name is Clayton Cox, two-fifteen Doubletree Lane, Smithville. I am the current owner of this property. I just want to clarify, there's rumors going around that I don't actually own this property. So I just wanted to be on the record that I do actually own it. My company is O M W Investments. I bought the property. We bought it on January twenty-first of two thousand twenty, and everything was recorded then, and she was funded at the time. Then, basically, the only reason I'm selling it is I had a private investor that has gone on note because of the way the economy is now, so you don't want to go move forward with it. So that is my only reason of selling it, but I still need to go through with this to be able to sell it to the new developer. That's pretty much it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Robert Hadley.
My name is Robert Hadley. I live at five-two-zero Second Creek Road, and I'm not in favor of this, this, this development. One of my main reasons is I'm worried about what the water is going to do. I don't know how many of you people have lived in this town for the last sixty years, but probably not too many of you. I've lived here my entire life, and I grew up with floods two or three times a year. I was having to move my furniture with my parents out of our house and back in and clean up the mud, and it was just a mess. I just, what I'm worried about is if you go filling that part where the multifamily, the duplexes are going to be, that's, we were, they were talking last week about what they were going to have to do to get that above the floodplain. Well, there's only one way, and that is to fill it. Well, what that does, that pushes water, it displaces water. I don't know how many of you guys kind of know what the physics are about that, but what happens is if you have this much water, this is your floodplain, and you go adding a bunch of dirt over here, well, what this, the same amount of water coming into this floodplain is going to raise this water level up higher to where it's going to cause damage in places that it normally wouldn't without them filling this up. That's my concern, and I, I don't know, you know, I haven't checked all the specifics about, you know, how it's going to affect the environment. You know, there's a lot of legal things that I don't know if they've, they've already done these studies. You know, I know you all were talking about a, a traffic study that had to be conducted before you could give it final approval, and I, I think maybe there ought to be an, an environmental impact study done also on this project to make sure that it's not going to cause any issues with not only me at my house, but the people downtown here are going to, they're going to realize the raised, the elevated water levels whenever you go filling a lot, so. I'll, I'll get out of your hair. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any other cards on the, and no one registered online, correct? All right, thank you. Open up to the board for discussion. Alderman Chevalier.
Thank you. So Cynthia, Jack, I mean, there, there is nothing in, in the deed, right, that, that has this language that would, you know, state that this had to happen?
Why Jack's walking out? We did review the deed with our attorney today, and there is no language in the deed.
Okay. So, I mean.
That's my understanding. I was just going to say we.
So, so. And also, you know, based on the finding of facts and everything else, this is a zoning rehearing. This is not a court of law. Lawyers can go to the court of law, and there's a second reading. They can file something there before the second reading if they like, but this is a zoning item. They've met the finding of facts as they stated from planning and zoning, and the legal application that they signed for planning and zoning is what we have to go off of.
And, and as far as the, like, the water studies and environmental impact, those are, those are for when we have the site plan, right, when, when they tell us what, what we need to build. Is that, is that how that works out?
No, that stuff has already been submitted. It will be presented at the January meeting for the subdivision.
Yeah, that's what I meant. I mean, that, that's not, that's not related to the zoning. This is a separate issue.
Yes, you're correct.
So, okay, so.
There will be another opportunity to look at that in the plot review.
Okay, yep. After the second, so it'd be a planning and zoning first, and then at the meeting on the, on the third Tuesday. So you have two Tuesdays in your own January. That answers all your questions. Any other questions from the board? Alderman Russell.
Yes, sir.
Any, any questions? I don't want to leave you out.
No, thank, thank you, Mayor. I, I have, I have questions, but probably not, not, not to go into here. I just, a lot of things that I'm, that are coming up that just raises questions in my mind, but I know you guys have done your due diligence in the, in the P and Z meeting, so.
Thank you. Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Russell.
I'm going to abstain.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier.
Aye.
Alderman Shipley.
Aye.
Alderman Yulidol.
Aye.
Four with one abstain.
Motion carries, Ms. Wagner. Please read the bill.
An ordinance changing the zoning classifications or districts of certain lands located in the city of Smithville, Missouri.
Next item on the agenda is number twelve. Alderman Yulidol.
Motion to approve resolution eleven sixty-one, one-two-two North one-sixty-nine Highway Site Plan Review, the former crash, crash chopper building.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Alderman Chevalier.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Yes.
I just want to say this on resolution.
I, I have a question real quick.
Alderman Russell, Alderman Chevalier is going first.
I apologize.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Alderman Russell, then.
I, I apologize about that. Just a question on the site plan was the, the area that was said fencing and for storage, what, who is, who, what is that for?
Yeah, all we know right now is storage. They haven't named a tenant or anything. It's for the property.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And with the, especially with the changes we had, what, a month ago, Jack, outdoor storage has to be fenced, not necessarily in a building. So they're meeting the ordinances that we approved a couple months ago on fencing requirements for outdoor storage of businesses.
Okay, I, I remember those, and, but there's nobody that, that know business that right now is going to use that for storage?
Not that we know of, no.
Okay.
They haven't identified any tenants or let us know anyway.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Chevalier.
Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, this, this re, reimagining and adding of the additional retail space is kind of a, you know, exactly what we were looking for when we did that TIF a few years ago. This is the direct result of that, where we have new grocery store, new developments down there, and then this old, this old building is getting new developments put into it as well. So I think it's a big win for, for the city.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Alderman Hartman, welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor.
All those in favor approving resolution eleven sixty-one, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is number thirteen. Household hazardous waste contract. Alderman Yulidol.
Motion to approve resolution one-one-six-two hazardous waste contract with Mark for two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Russell. Any discussion? All those in favor approving resolution eleven sixty-two, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Any other public comment? No? All right. Next item on the agenda is the appointment to the TIF Commission. As you guys possibly read in the memo, we originally appointed six, but with the changes to the Clay County Constitution, the city gets to appoint three once we've signed the executive order with the others. So the first one is Steve Sarver, former Alderman and former planning commissioner. Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Shipley.
Aye.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Russell.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier.
Aye.
Alderman Yulidol.
Aye.
Six-zero.
Motion carries. Next is Adam Royds. For those of you who have served on the EDC and Main Street with Adam, you know, he's a ball of energy and ready to get to work, so. Next one I appoint is Adam Royds. Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Shipley.
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier.
Aye.
Alderman Yulidol.
Aye.
Alderman Russell.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Six-zero.
Next is, she's in attendance today, Kelly Kabelski, for the TIF Commission. Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Russell.
Aye.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier.
Aye.
Alderman Yulidol.
Aye.
Alderman Shipley.
Aye.
Six-zero.
Thank you. Motion carries. We have our three members of the TIF Commission, so we're back to the whole board with the county appointing theirs as well. Next item is new business. Do you have any new business from the board? No? All right, well, before we adjourn to executive session, we won't meet again until the third Tuesday of January, since the holiday falls, two holidays fall between now and then. City Hall is closed on the second, as mentioned earlier, so having a meeting on the third would be tough on everyone. So Planning and Zoning on the tenth, Board of Aldermen on the seventeenth. So happy holidays, everyone. Happy New Year, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session. Alderman Yulidol.
Motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to section six-one-zero dot zero-two-one, one and two RSMO.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Yulidol.
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier.
Aye.
Alderman Shipley.
Aye.
Alderman Russell.
Aye.
Six-zero.
We stand adjourned to executive session. We stand adjourned to executive session. Hot mic. You're to stay, Linda, you're to stay in here.